Okay, call to order. We have a quorum. Can we do the roll call, please?
Mayor Stix.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wyrick.
Here.
Councilmember Blatts.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Thank you. And Randy, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
Right hand over your chest. God, can you guys believe that? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, no.
I froze up there for a moment.
I can't see you guys now. Wait, you disappeared. Hold on.
We see you.
But where did she go?
Uh-oh, now she disappeared.
And then can we have the approval of the agenda?
Move to approve.
Madam Mayor, one note as the council considers the agenda. The agenda for the closed session will be adjusted to allow item number two, conference of legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation related to facts and circumstances that are might result in litigation, but which the city believes are not known to potential plaintiffs, is going to be continued until after the open session items.
Move approval of amended agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, and we need to vote on this, Gail?
Yes. Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So moving forward to the consent calendar, motion to approve anything?
We have first, are you gonna, are you changing?
Oh, oops, I'm sorry, presentation. Sorry, James.
No problem. And I'll do a brief introduction. Gail, can you let Jordan into the meeting, please? And while we're doing that, so, so we were working with Watershed Progressive on a number of projects, and we met with Watershed Progressive last week, and they are working with Jordan Kier, who is a certified hydrogeologist, and we started to talk about, you know, all the water issues in the Ojai Valley. And, you know, Jordan is a, is a, is an expert on that situation. I'm only laughing because that's probably putting it mildly, but he's an expert on the hydrogeology and Ojai surface and groundwater. So we asked Jordan with all the things going on, like the, the grants that we're doing, the monitoring well that we have on this agenda, and all the other water issues that we're currently facing, if Jordan would be willing to come do a presentation and kind of just talk about the current situation with Ojai surface and groundwater. And so Jordan offered to do that, and we roped him into it. So, Jordan, are you on the meeting?
I am, thank you. I appreciate that. I hope you can see me a little bit here. And I believe I'll have an opportunity to share a screen as well. So we'll do that. But thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. It's always, it's always a pleasure to speak for the, to the city council. And we're, of course, used to doing it in person, and this will have to suffice. As Mr. Vega mentioned, this stems from a conversation we had about a week or so ago with a couple of the council members, Watershed Progressive, and it just made sense to sort of bring a presentation like this to the council tonight, as no fewer than two items on the agenda package have really groundwater at their heart. And the interaction of surface and groundwater is critically important, because really that's what is leaving the basin naturally, and the city really is in the heart of it, not just the heart of the valley, the heart of the groundwater basin, but really specifically the heart of surface and groundwater interaction in the southwest portion of the Ojai Basin. Now, that's the, the title of the presentation tonight, but it could also be titled, "Where Does the Water Go Once It Leaves the Sky in Ojai?" And really, if you think about it that way, it becomes much more simple, and so we'll try to keep this as entertaining as possible. So let me share the screen. And get a slideshow going here. Okay, can everyone see this now?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, thank you. So as I mentioned, this, this talk is Surface and Groundwater Interaction in the Southwest Ojai Basin. Tonight's meeting, of course, as, as I was introduced, Jordan Kier PG stands for professional geologist, CHG stands for certified hydrogeologist. And I've had the pleasure of working in Ojai for the better part of 20 years now, starting with work, minor work for a number of small farmers and residences, but really picking up steam when I worked on my master of science thesis, conducting a number of aquifer tests and stratigraphic analysis of the basin for the Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency, and which is now inclusive in the Groundwater Sustainability Agency for, for the Ojai Basin, and I'm happy to serve as agency hydrogeologist among hundreds of other projects we work on at Kier Groundwater. This, this image gives a really brief, simple picture of the basin and its position in the, in the watershed. The blue outline is the San Antonio Creek watershed, the light blues are surface waters. The, the black line in bold is the agency jurisdiction for the Ojai Basin GMA. And the red line is more or less the, the basin boundaries, although that's been modified since this, this graphic was prepared. Within this are also some of the purveyors, the city of Ojai area in the, in the purplish and the hatched areas being, which are served by various purveyors, Hermitage Mutual Water Company, Senior Canyon Mutual Water Company, Gridley Road, Ciete Robles, and, and of course, Golden State Water Company shown in this graph, that's now the Casitas-Ojai system. Way back once upon a time, the basin was thought of as a little bit of a sandbox right on top of a bunch of bedrock. That QT that's sort of in, in orange there represents what was thought of in 1933 as the, as, as what we now know as the Ojai Basin. Come 1953, we get a bit better idea about what's going on in the basin. Number of wells had been drilled to depth in the, in the basin area, and still we're looking at just a sandbox over undifferentiated tertiary bedrock formations. Come 1992, we get a few more E-logs that are representative of what's going on in the basin, number of wells with more detailed lithology, and a better handle on how the water levels have changed over time, and what that effective base of fresh water, which is not necessarily the base of the alluvium in the basin, was begun to be defined. Come 2005, we have many more E-logs at our disposal, and we're able to correlate these objectively across the basin. In this particular case, we, we generated the green to represent clay aquitards, whereas the white in this case were, were the aquifers, and the reddish material was the bedrock, the bottom of the barrel, if you will. Based on the testing that we did in the early, some 20 years ago, early knots, we found that really the most productive areas of the basin are in the central and eastern portion of, of the Ojai Basin. To the west where the city is, the production tends to be a lot less from wells that are drilled in that area, although the, the aquifers do correlate at depth. It's that deep production system that is yielding the water to the cities and the agricultural interests within the basin. And over on the west side, things are a lot more clayey. There's a lot more fine-grained material, water moves a lot more slowly through those zones, and there tends to be what's known as this perched aquifer system. And that's the one that seems to have the most weight with respect to the surface and groundwater interaction. More detailed model development went in, in, in more recent years, really stratifying the, the basin with respect to quantification of, of different characteristics of aquifers, how permeable and porous they were, and correlating them across the basin. But if we take a look at what happens to a drop of water as it enters the basin as surface water, we take a little bit of a tour from northeast to southwest in the basin, and in this case, the flow into the Ojai Basin from San Antonio Creek as it has a confluence with Gridley and Ladera Creeks to become San Antonio Creek proper. In this case, this is Ladera Road crossing, creeks flowing over. Took this picture right about the location of that yellow star in the inset map. As we go a little bit further downstream, it gets a bit more picturesque, and you see quite a bit of water flowing through the old diversion works for the San Antonio Creek spreading grounds. As we get deeper into the basin, Fort Ice Road is projected here, and you can see the flow is a lot less. Now, this is all taken on the same day a couple of years back. But by the time we get to where that yellow star is, the water is fully infiltrated into the basin. Now, it flows in the subsurface here toward the deepest aquifers, or those production aquifers that are in the central portion of the basin. As we get further downstream, the water begins to daylight again, in this case, south of Grand Avenue Bridge. Again, these are all on the same day. And then as you get further south, the flow picks up a bit more and finds its way out of the basin. And by the time you get south of the Ojai Avenue Bridge on this particular day, it's flowing, and you can see quite a bit of algae in the, in the water. This is a May, May photograph, and all of these were taken on the same day. So if we think about what's happening in the, in the bigger picture, back to that original graphic, we see surface water flowing into the basin, finding its way into the subsurface in one way or another, and then discharging out near the boundaries of the Ojai Basin GMA. That southern boundary is where the Arroyo Perita Santa Ana Fault lifts up bedrock on the south side and allows surface water and groundwater to come up against that, that boundary and jump up over that dam, if you will, a natural feature that keeps flow in the San Antonio Creek effectively perennial at that point, always flowing. But it takes about 12 inches of rain on the valley floor before we see that surface water flow crossing the basin. You may have seen a little bit of surface flow this year when we had some of those flashier storms. But to get a sustained flow, we typically need about 12 inches of rain, and that's about half of the average over the long term in the Ojai Basin. This year, we've got just under four inches of, of rain on the valley floor at the county fire station. Up on the ridge tops, it might be closer to six inches, and that's pretty typical, that we see close to double the amount of precipitation at elevation, which is where much of the recharge comes from, as opposed to on the valley floor, slightly drier. Now, where that first water goes, the OB GMA has a, a network of monitoring wells, and this is downloaded today from one of those monitoring wells at the San Antonio Creek Spreading Grounds Rehabilitation Project. This is from a 210-foot-deep well that's screened from 190 to 210 feet. And this is a question we often get. We get an inch of rain, how much does that contribute to the basin? And this is the answer. In that December 28th to 31th storm, brought about 1.42 inches of rain on the valley floor, and we see a jump up a couple of weeks later from about 55 to 62 feet. So we had about seven feet of, of rise in groundwater at this point. This is where the water first reaches the saturated alluvium of the basin along San Antonio Creek. That January 24th to 30th storm system that we had, had about two and a half inches of rainfall on the valley floor. And you can see, again, a couple of weeks later, that bigger spike bringing up nearly nine feet of, of increase in water level. And this is always fun to look at in the beginning of the water year, because the, it's been drier, and the, the consecutive storms are not blended in into noise. So when you look at a graph like this, it's somewhat easier to see how the level on the right-hand side of the Y-axis of this graph jumps up with that precipitation. Now, we have several of these wells in which we monitor relatively consistently, and there in the triangle is the, is the point of discharge from the basin. Now, we have one of our key wells, it's known as the Elrod Well, and we have a logger in there that monitors the depth to water and the temperature of the water at 90-minute intervals. So from 2017 to 2021, you see it here, except for the times when those aberrative data points are present, the logger had to be removed because the pump was being worked on. It is an active producing well, but you can see how the precipitation in wetter years makes a significant increase in groundwater levels and storage over the course of each year, and it recedes in, in the, in the, typically from the late spring to the, to the wintertime before the next storm systems come along. But you can see the big jumps here in 2019, and really sustaining that in 2020. Down where we are in 2021, we're just near the point where we're at what we call the nadir, the low point of storage in the basin, but then also starting to see some recovery. On the longer-term scale, from 1944 to 2024, shown here on this graph, we use this to, to create a long-term hydrograph, what years and years of precipitation and drought, how those are recorded in the, in the basin water levels. And just jumping forth to today's system, we're at 143.04 feet, low ground surface at that key well area, and that's about 73% of the basin capacity, or 58,400 acre-feet. You heard it here first. Now, that's what's going on in the producing aquifers of the basin. But if we look around the city, we notice that, that there are several places where water is very shallow. There are places where we need to pump off groundwater, French drains, around foundations and walls and retaining systems and things like that. But we also have a network of, of monitoring wells from environmental investigations, places where there were leaking underground storage tanks, typically in some cases are dry cleaners. But that's resulted in a number of, of field points here, shown in this, in this map as, as these light pink dots. And there's one right there in the south portion of the city, right along Grand, Ojai Avenue, you have, I think that's Gabriel's, and then you've got a couple of other old or new gas stations that had leaky underground tanks, and a number of monitoring wells were drilled there. And what we noticed is that the data from those wells, they're all very shallow, some 25 or 30 feet. They all encountered groundwater very shallowly, some 3, 10, or 13 feet, and it tends to stay relatively constant right there. So why is it that we have this shallow water in the area of the city and this deep water that fluctuates seasonally and with, with production in the production aquifers of the basin? And the answer is that we have this perched aquifer system. Water that precipitates within the city and on the west side of the basin tends to go to that perch system first and then discharge to San Antonio Creek, whereas the water that infiltrates within San Antonio Creek and Thatcher Creek and Horn Creek and Reeves Creek on the east end and the north end of the basin, they tend to find their way into the, into the production aquifer. And that's separate, and why that's important is because of where it comes out. The first daylighting water in San Antonio Creek today tends to be right around Soul Park Golf Course. It's, it's something that we've been mapping, you can see the GPS unit here, over time for, for years now. And the idea is to monitor where that daylighting occurs on a monthly basis and get a snapshot of where it's flowing in, because that is, tends to be relatively consistent, consistent regardless of the depth to water in the producing aquifers. So we also measure the, the flow at the, the points of exit. This is today's photo underneath Creek Road, where the, the surface water discharge is under, from underneath much of the city area. The creek is known as Stewart, Ojai Creek, Montgomery, or Fox, depending on what maps you look at. And this is the discharge that we see coming out of that little notch today under Creek Road. Now, on San Antonio Creek proper, just stones throw away, literally, from that, from that notch, is where we monitor the outflow from the basin, because it's direct surface water flow directly over bedrock. This is today's photograph, so this is, you can see how beautiful it was, the trees are deciduous, and, but yet the creek is flowing. And we measure this by taking a flow probe in sections of the, of the creek right here. All of this flow that you see was gaining from the point of that, of that first daylighting groundwater where that GPS unit was in the middle of the creek. And at the same time, the depth to water in the key well area is over 140 feet down. So we take these monthly readings, and we've been doing this since 2019 in San Antonio Creek at a monthly basis. And we also have added, when there is flow there, flow out of Montgomery Creek in that notch. And today's flow was about just under six tenths of a CFS from San Antonio Creek proper, and about five, that'll be one hundredth of a CFS out of the Montgomery Creek notch. That adds up to about 0.64 CFS, which is a close to 300 gallons per minute. So that, that water, you can imagine, flowing continuously adds up. These are snapshot-based data points, and they tend to be pretty effective. But we see that between 30 and 45 acre-feet per month, discharges to San Antonio Creek from the Ojai Basin during this time, timeframe. And that in the water year to date, we have over 180 acre-feet that has flowed out of the basin. So what does this mean in, in some of these scientific terms? This is a graph that we've developed to, to illustrate this, and I'll explain it here. The upper graph is daily rainfall. So every time it rains a little bit, we put a little, little bar on this graph, and you can see how the flow, the rain was much more intense in 2017, higher precipitation in total, but 2018, 19, and 20, similar events, potentially more dense in 2019, a little less dense in 2020. But as we go down in this graph, this is a pretty complex graph, so bear, bear with me. On the, on the X-axis of all of this is 2017, 18, 19, 20, and now 21. On the Y-axis of the center graph is the elevation of the water. That is at ground surface at the key well, about 880 feet. The ground surface elevation at the spill point of the, of the Ojai Basin on San Antonio Creek, just under 640 feet there. And then on the right Y-axis is the discharge rate of flow. That is how much water is flowing out. That's in the pink for San Antonio Creek in total, near where its confluence with the Ventura River is. And then it's, in those little magenta Xs are the flows that we've been measuring on a monthly basis. On the, the darker blue is the depth to water or elevation in that key well, the automated logger that records it. And then the, the elevation of the spill point of water, daylighting water, is the lighter blue. So where that light blue is continuously vertical, that's when San Antonio Creek is continuously flowing across the basin. And the, the lighter pink material, or the pink bars, are where the discharge is measured by the county at Creek Road. So that is what the county is measuring as entering the Upper Ventura River groundwater basin near its confluence with the Ventura River. Now, I happened to check today, you'll see that there's no real pink bars much past the end of the 2020 water year. Much of that flow has been underground in San Antonio Creek. Doesn't daylight that point, because it's infiltrated out of the Ojai Basin over that bedrock notch and into a number of, either a number of wells, little surface diversions, and quite a bit of uptake from plants and trees in that, in that area. So more water is flowing out of the Ojai Basin as surface water than is flowing into the Upper Ventura River Basin as surface water. And I happened to check today at about the same time that we were collecting this, this measurement today of about 0.64 CFS cumulatively coming out of the Ojai Basin. And at the Ventura River in, at, at the Casitas Vista Bridge, where the United States Geological Survey measures the, the flow continuously there, they were measuring about one and a half CFS. So less than, less than half of the flow that is coming out of Ojai is, is what is measured in the Ventura River. So it's, we're, and there's quite a bit of alluvium that has subsurfaceal flow there as well. So the idea is that, is that we have a significant amount of flow coming out of Ojai, but nothing compared to what is actually flowing in the Ventura River. It's a very small component that is finding its way out of the Ojai Basin, out of the perch system, and into the, the Ventura River system. And this is important, because if we look at what the Ojai Basin is and where the city is, it's largely over the perched aquifer system. That's water that flows into the city area, finds its way out of San Antonio Creek separately and distinctly from the deep production zones in this, shown in this cross-section here. So the idea is that what we can do to affect the water systems near surface within the city can have a greater and more acute effect on flow in San Antonio Creek for habitat benefits, for water retention projects, acting in the city area. It's the places like the San Antonio Creek Spreading Grounds that can focus on what's going on to provide the production aquifers that are located at depth within the city. And part of the projects that I believe Ms. Hirsch will be talking about, and the, the depth discrete monitoring well, which actually is shown here, later agenda items, will help to better quantify and identify exactly what is going on quality and quantity-wise over the long term within this portion of the city, and help both contribute to the design of and realize the benefits of many of the projects that, that the Wildlife Conservation Board, Ventura River Instream Flow projects and grant funding are geared toward. So it's, it's a pretty complex story. I thank you for your attention, and happy to take any questions, if, if there probably are many, but we'll be around for many of the other agenda items as well. So I thank you for your, for your attention and appreciate the, the ideas. I see a, a hand raised. Or two, or three.
Hey, Jordan. Sure will be interesting, this is kind of a question and kind of a rhetorical statement, to see how that graph changes plotting around the San Antonio Creek Spreading Grounds if they ever went into operation, actually, finally. Many years, a lot of money spent, never in operation. Sure will be interesting to see what happens when it goes into operation. Do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, absolutely. It, it is interesting, and there have been many water years when the conditions were ideal, but the permitting conditions were not to divert that water. And infrastructurally, the, the spreading grounds themselves should be fairly well, well-versed and ready to accept much of that flow. The, between the powers that be and, and time passings, it certainly will be good to get that up and running. As far as the quantification of it goes, we see potential benefits, depending on how much is able to be diverted and stored within the basin, both in storage but also in water levels and energy savings too, because wells would not have to spend as much energy lifting that, that water from depth.
I think it's, it's very timely to start trying to pull together to focus on that. And, and the other thing I really want to emphasize is how important what we're learning in about these perched aquifers. Because what it really means is that the city, by reengineering its hardscape, can have a disproportionate benefit in terms of habitat restoration and in-stream flows for the entire valley. Are you agree with that, or is?
Yeah, absolutely. You couldn't have said it, you couldn't have said it any better. It's a, it's an excellent statement.
Do you concur?
I do.
Jordan, the, when I look at all of this science, which I think is incredible, and all of the years that you've been doing it, and seeing, actually, what I, what I understood better tonight, were the two, you know, how, how these perch systems and how the actual lower aquifer system work simultaneously based on the amount of rainfall, and eventually where they go to, which, which is going to help in this lawsuit. Am I correct? Having a thorough and a better, just not a thorough, but a better understanding of how water is collected in this basin or in this valley, and how it moves downstream, and how the different types of surface flows and subs- and how the different types of surface flows and subsurface flows and how all of these work together to dictate how much water is actually entering the Ventura River watershed area. I just find all that information incredible and I just see it as being beneficial to the citizens of Ojai in this lawsuit that we actually understand how this water enters and how it leaves and where it leaves and when it leaves and how much leaves. So that's one thing that I that I that I think I'm right in stating that this information benefits us and that if we're drug into that lawsuit deeper than what we are. And then the second thing is the projects that we are doing with this with Progressive and Regina is the fact that it doesn't sound like originally I thought that we were going to be impacting the aquifer, but it looks like we're going to be impacting the perch system of the aquifer, which is which is more beneficial to the city itself. So again, it's a win. I knew we were doing something right when we initiated this. We didn't necessarily know how right. But your science is dictating and presenting to us that we are on the right footing and we're on the right direction and we need to continue with what we're trying to achieve with Regina.
Yeah, Randy, you and I kind of lucked into this, right, doing the right thing without fully understanding it. And we started trying to do do better things with stormwater capture with the streets.
Yeah, I I kept thinking that we were going to core this big old hole and take it down to the aquifer and dump this water into it. And that's not, that's not the science. So it's interesting how you've got to cap capture it, you've got to let it percolate. And then it's going to go and migrate to where it needs to go. So it's really interesting, just great science, Jordan, really good job.
Thank you.
Oh, Ryan.
Uh, Jordan, thank you. I I've been privy to this or a very similar presentation a number of times and I always I always feel like it's really buttoned up for the current situation and what we're looking at. And I always appreciate. I've explained this science much poorer than you have presented it many times to a lot of people. But it's really important to understand because it's difficult that, you know, the idea of of water conservation is not the same as water flow in rivers and those don't necessarily equate to one drop becoming a drop of water. And as Randy alluded to, the the watershed, the water adjudication, the Ventura River water case that's going on, it it's a very complicated geological science question on how the interrelationship between all the wells and properties in different parts. And Jordan just talked about the Ojai Basin. There's three other basins and a bunch of spaces that are in between that are all part of it too. And you could see how complicated just understanding the science under our own feet where we have had the luxury of having a really good groundwater basin management agency for a very long time, whereas these other bases are, if they even have an agency, are brand new for the most part. It just shows how complex and difficult this question is. And we're ultimately going to end up with a lot of Jordan Kears and a lot of people trying to catch up to what OB GMA has been able to produce as far as data for this entire watershed. And, you know, when you see a final product and it's not even final yet. I mean, obviously there's more data to get, there's more wells to drill. We're still very much in the infancy of learning everything about our own aquifer system. And you could see back as the the 30s, 50s, 70s, we were way off base on some of the data that we had compared to what we have now. So it's just, you know, I I really appreciate it. I'm a little bit of a nerd when it comes to this. I love it and it's important for what we're trying to do in a much larger picture. But I I just, you know, it is well, it's so well put together. It's very easy to understand once you hear it. I have the luxury, like I said, Jordan, hearing it a few times. I think you're getting better at it each time too. So I really do appreciate it. But, you know, without commenting further, I I think that the more we can do that's reasonable to get as much data in the hands of OB GMA, this is what it turns into. And this is why it's worth investing where we need to to get better data because we're still learning and the more we learn, the better we can do with what we, you know, take in a limited resource. And also, you know, if you look, you know, one other proof in the pudding fact as far as talking about the city of Ojai, the city of Ojai and the former Golden State District has reduced its water usage so extensively that if drop for drop of all that water was going down into the Ventura River that otherwise, you know, isn't being pumped out of the San Antonio Creek well field, there would be a lot, a lot more water going down the Ventura River than is. The reality is that that water just doesn't go that way. So conserving it, as we've seen in the past, also doesn't result in it getting to the places our neighbors think it needs to get to and want to tell us what to do with it. So again, Jordan, just really appreciate it. And I'm sure over the next, well, probably it'll be a few years, but I'm sure we're going to be talking a lot more about this.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the kind words and and importantly, the city stewardship of of these resources. It's it's paramount to success.
Thank you, Jordan, very clear.
Thank you.
Really appreciate that. Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, thank you, Jordan, for coming. Thanks for your time. Okay, well, we'll move forward to public comment. Gail, will you take Jordan away? Thank you.
Okay, we're doing that and there are no public communications tonight.
May I say something?
Sure.
I thought I heard Jordan say that he wanted to, that he was going to stick around. Oh, he's at his own house, right? So he can
Yeah, he's We're not, we're not removing him entirely from the meeting. We're just removing him from the Brady Bunch screens that you guys see.
Just want to make sure.
He'll be around for the rest of the meeting.
We didn't, we don't have any, somebody signed up for a public comment, but I will note, and we distributed to council. We received 32 comments today that have been distributed to council.
Thanks, James. All right, moving forward to the consent calendar.
I have a correction. I don't, do I have to pull the item to do that? It's just a small thing.
Sure.
Okay, I want to correct something in item D.
Yeah, if it's in the minutes, we should pull it and correct it. For the record, to be clear.
Okay, also I'll pull item D.
Okay.
Move to approve the rest.
Second.
Okay, a vote, Gail, please.
Councilmember Blatts.
Yes.
Mayor Pretem Wyrick.
Yes.
Mayor Sticks.
Yes.
Councilmember Haney. Councilmember Francina.
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. And then D.
Okay, so Gail, on D on page five, where it says council members reports. It says, do you see that, Gail? Council members reports.
Yeah.
Okay, where it says with the Schumash saying, could you just change that with the Schumash word for Ojai?
Okay.
At the Arts Commission, it said something about a welcome sign. I had to correct it there too. Let's get it right. Thank you.
Got it. And we're following up and we were getting the Schumash word for Ojai. So that's that's what we should end up on the sign, so.
Good call.
Okay, so move to approve D now.
Second.
As amended.
Can we vote, Gail, on D?
Mayor Pretem Wyrick.
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Sticks.
Yes.
Councilmember Francina.
Yes.
Councilmember Haney.
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts.
Yes.
Thank you, Gail. All right, moving on to discussion, first is coronavirus. COVID report from James, please.
Thank you. And we have a brief presentation. I will try to keep it very brief because we have people waiting for the the next two items. And so just a shorter status update today. And, you know, hopefully these do get shorter shorter because usually it means that things are trending in a positive direction and and there aren't as many issues to try to wrap our arms around. So I'm hoping these get shorter and shorter. But we have a brief update on COVID. We wanted to start, there's been a lot of good news over the last two weeks and things are trending in the positive direction. But we wanted to start with just showing some of the case statistics because it is important to just keep doing our part while we're working on getting people vaccinated and continuing to slow the spread, especially with the new strains that I we were hearing today about one that they're calling the new California or not new, but it's the California strain that is potentially are very spreadable. And so it's important to keep being exercising distancing and wearing face coverings and all those things. But you can see from this chart, we've had a major drop and a slowdown in cases in the last couple of weeks. But you can see that we were noticing this doubling trend over the last few months from November to December and then December to January. And that slowed down. It wasn't a doubling in the last month, but it's still a sizable increase. 25,000 cases in the County of Ventura in about a month. So and that, you know, was was concentrated around the earlier part of the month and has really slowed down. But it's still, you know, it's still, the virus is still out there. It's still spreading. And that is reflected also locally and the same types of trends where we were getting a doubling. And this time we had, you know, a 50% rather than another 100% of cases. So slowing down, but still spreading. The ICU capacity has has gotten better. The hospitalization rate's gotten better. But we have seen there was over the last couple of months of spike in in deaths, unfortunately. That's also slowing down right now, but still still there. So I think the the main message is, you know, things are improving. People are getting vaccinated, but in the meantime, we all just need to keep doing our part. Our average case rate over seven days has dropped substantially to 16.9. And as a reminder to everybody, the reason this number is important is when it drops below seven and along with a couple of key other key factors, one's already dropped enough to potentially go to the red tier, the next tier, which would allow more things to open. So we need to get under seven on our average case rate to drop. We're at 16.9, but we were almost double that, you know, just recently. So it really has dropped and we're on pace. I've heard a couple estimates that it could happen in the next couple of weeks, but it just depends on on how the how how everything comes together in the next couple of weeks. On our positivity rate, we actually are low enough to be red tier, but both the seven day case rate and the adjusted positivity rate are still slightly higher than red tier. So we're still in the purple most restrictive tier, but we're getting closer to being into the red tier. And for people that don't know the difference, because it is fairly complicated, we've shown here at a glance, you can see the bolded language and that's the difference between purple tier and red tier. So under purple tier, retail stores are supposed to operate with only 25% of their capacity. When we move to red tier, they can then operate with 50% of the capacity. Probably the biggest one under the current purple tier, restaurants can be outdoors only, which works pretty well in Ojai, but obviously on some of the colder nights, it would be nice to move to red tier where we could have some 25% capacity indoors. And so that's somewhere we could be within the next couple of weeks, but we aren't currently. Similarly, gyms currently can only be outdoors only. And once we moved to red tier, it would be indoor with 10% capacity. And then movie theaters and museums, zoos and aquariums, we don't have a zoo or an aquarium, but we do have museums, would be able to open indoor with reduced capacity once we move to red tier. So not a whole lot changing, but there are some key things there with restaurants, gyms and museums being able to to open a little bit more fully. So that's the key thing as far as, you know, watching our case rate, once our case rate gets to a certain point, we can make these adjustments where and we're getting close to that point. In the meantime, we've continued to work on several other issues such as we mentioned last meeting that we were starting to meet with the different event holders in the city to talk about potential plans. We met with the Ojai Valley Tennis Tournament and everybody probably saw, I think it was Friday of last week or maybe Thursday, that the tennis tournament has decided to cancel this year's event. We were working through protocols with them. And ultimately, I think we agreed that the the challenge for the tennis tournament was that they needed a definitive yes or no like answer and to be able to commit and not change by March 1st because of the TV contracts and everything else. And so we just kept going through protocols and case numbers. And one day there would be a little bit of a surge and the next day it would be dropping. And we just all agreed that by March 1st, it was going to be difficult to predict. We had talked about some options like potentially postponing, but it just wasn't workable for the tennis tournament. And so it's, we're trending in a positive direction, but just April was too soon to know for sure. So the tennis tournament chose to cancel. We were working with different protocols for, you know, depending on what the situation was so that they could scale back if needed, but they they ultimately chose to cancel. And so the next group that we're meeting with this week is the music festival to talk about how that event could operate. I think last year they did virtually. So this year, we're probably going to talk about, you know, some options depending on what the COVID statistics are at that point. And so what we're just, we're going to keep meeting with the event holders and making sure that they have protocols and essentially for a worst case scenario and hopefully things keep improving and we don't need to use all those protocols. But that's a big part of what we're doing in recent weeks. We also just want to remind people that we have COVID testing available. It's been extended through March 31st, but it will be Wednesdays now from 9:00 AM to 3:30 PM. And so that is still available at Sarzadi Park. And then the big news, I'm sure everybody heard on Friday, but we wanted to make sure to to let the public know as well that there, this is a a big accomplishment that with everything going on, you know, will probably be overlooked. But Ojai was able to get a vaccine center here in in Ojai with several agencies kind of all working together, which is, you know, an accomplishment. And we were able to get this open Friday. Ojai Valley Hospital was definitely the lead on it, but I'm I'm sure the hospital will tell you, you know, we worked with the school district to set up the site. We were advocating with the hospital, with the county to our, with the hospital and the county to make sure that there is a site in Ojai. The hospital and I both were contacting the county and reminding them that we have a heavy elderly population and that we are fairly remote so that we were going to have a challenge getting people outside of the the valley. And we had talked at one point about if we needed to use our recreation vans to get people out, but we could only put one person per van, that, you know, it's not going to be very easy. So this really was a big accomplishment. We were, we're, they haven't put, launched too many of these sites yet. I know I was able to get one fairly early. They had 400 doses on Saturday, 407 to be exact, and they issued all 407 of those doses. And they have, if you have the chance to to check out the site, it's very, very impressive. It's just well set up, well run, you know, it's all, it's it's perfectly done. And they are expecting to receive 700 doses tomorrow and the the appointments are available on VenturaCountyRecovers.org. Or I should say, those appointments may have gone, they they went up yesterday on the website. But keep checking VenturaCountyRecovers.org for when they refresh those appointments. They're expecting to have vaccinations at that site three days a week. I believe it's Wednesday, Friday and Saturday for for the, at least or for the time being, I don't think they've put an end date on it yet. So so, you know, for Ojai, we have 400 doses already, another 700 coming. You know, 1100 for for the valley and and it's, you know, these are going to start making a dent in getting our population vaccinated and hopefully get some of that herd herd immunity going. So so this was a big one. They also, the county announced, and this was in coordination with the county as well, but the county announced that they are planning to open up on March 1st additional groups for vaccination. I believe they announced this this morning. It's been a long day, but they're, they've opened up the next group. They're going to begin vaccinating teachers, childcare providers, first responders. They're going to begin vaccinating teachers, childcare providers, first responders and food and agricultural workers. And then the big announcement that came actually quicker than I expected. It was that March 15th, they're going to start vaccinating individuals 16 to 64 with severe health conditions. And those are included there, but they include things like cancer, kidney disease, pulmonary disease, Down's syndrome, organ transplants, pregnancy, sickle cell disease, heart conditions, severe obesity or type 2 diabetes. So that's going to be a large group. We expect that to be a large group and they're opening up that group on March 15th. So over the next, between now and then, anybody in any of these groups should check venturacountyrecovers.org. There's the, the website here on the slide. It's backslash vaccine information, backslash portal. And you can make appointments that way, or they have a phone number, 805-477-7161 for anybody who can't get computer access. And so hopefully we're able to keep increasing that, the doses that are available there and getting more, more people in Ojai vaccinated. So that's, that's the current, you know, that's going to be the current focus. With that, that's the coronavirus update. Happy to take any questions, but it's, you know, overall a positive direction this week, much more positive than the last couple of updates, and hopefully that continues.
I just want to say, bravo, James.
That vaccination one was, you know, there was, all those agencies put in a lot of work and Hottie particularly at the hospital. You and I each on weekends were calling each other and trying to get through to people. So, so, you know, credit to the hospital, the school district, the, in the county, you know, that, that was a real collaborative effort, which was really nice. So.
Yeah, just, just to amplify that. Once again, the solidarity of this valley, this community in keeping a local hospital going. You know, people forget how closely we're losing that hospital. We had to come together, the community, and it's just keeps paying off again and again and again. And we need to make sure that continues. This, and yeah, and again, James, I know how hard you worked on this. Thank you very much.
Real quick question, the 10% red tier gyms, was that always 10%? My, my memory, I think, is playing tricks on me. I thought it might've been higher at one point and not, has it always been 10%?
You know, it did hit me this morning too, where I thought that that was 25, but
I had the same memory, yeah.
Yeah, but I have, we have the, the, the version that was updated. The most recent update was, I think, November. And on that one said 10%. So it's, they had done a couple revises, so it may have been higher before, but that is the
Okay, so it's not just me, you were having the same.
Yeah, I know, that, that would caught me by surprise.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you again, James.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to number three, we have a presentation, Watershed Progressive.
And I'll do a quick introduction. And then I'll turn it over to Regina with Watershed Progressive. But just as, almost more of a reminder for, for those watching, because I know council's been following this, but the city had worked with, had entered into an agreement with Watershed Progressive to apply for, well, to do a lot of things, including a multi-phase analysis. But one of the big projects we were excited about was we were applying for this grant funding to do some water analysis and water recharge projects. And we, the grant was approved and it was $1.78 million to a variety of agencies, including the city of Ojai. $503,000 of that was, was for the city of Ojai and for four of our planning projects. And so those four planning projects are a project focused, focused on recharge enhancement for the East Topa Topa neighborhood. Another project was for a recharge project for the downtown south neighborhood. And the third project was a Signal Street, Grand Avenue Pocket Park, which Regina will discuss that and the ability to, to add another project. She'll, she'll include that in her presentation. And then the fourth project was to do water wise and recharge incentive programs. And so we have, Regina and her group have been working on these. And this is a status update for the council and for the public on each of these projects and where they currently stand and next steps. So with that, I will turn it over to Regina.
Great, thank you, council members and general manager, James Vega. Thank you for having us. And I do want to make sure I note that I have my colleague Nicole Stern with me, landscape architect with us tonight. And so she's going to go over project number three, Signal Street, when we get there. And so we have quite a few slides that we're going to kind of breeze over. We're going to try to give you a picture of an update. And, and then we can always discuss the slides in further detail. And I just want to call out to thank you, Jordan Keer of Keer Groundwater for that great premise that we've really built a lot of this work upon. So thank you for that good presentation. And with that, actually, James Hahn, I believe was going to start a video to start it off. And if you just want to go ahead and
What's your water story? The average person in the U.S. uses 150 gallons of water a day. You can generate new water just by making some simple changes. Roughly a quarter of your daily water use is for showers and laundry, which can be reused to irrigate trees and shrubs, growing food, creating shade and reducing fire risk by keeping the land hydrated and cooler in summer. Even in arid climates, rainfall often exceeds community water needs. When we slow and capture runoff with collection tanks and bio swales, we can reduce irrigation need and build healthier soils, improve water quality and security and increase flows for rivers and creeks. Celebrating and managing water in our landscapes supports healthy ecosystems, which is good for everybody. What's your community's water story? You can help to make it a good one. Sign up for the Land Resilience Partnership.
Great, thank you, James, for sharing that. And with that, I'm going to share my screen. That was a video that was put out through some joint collaborative funding with this funding that I'm going to talk about tonight. And so you'll, that was also done with a lot of different Ojai-based artists. And I just thought you would enjoy that. I'm going to share my screen here tonight. And again, thank you. As we noted, we're going to be talking about an update for VRAF. And I'll tell you a little bit about what Ventura River Instream Flow VRAF stands for. But first I wanted to introduce myself again, Watershed Progressive. And we really work with, to create a community and a watershed link for a healthy resilient future. A lot of people ask us, you guys are involved in a lot of different projects in Ojai and how do you do this all? We're not one person. We have really fantastic 28 strong staff that live in, some of them live in Ojai. We have an office in Ojai, but more than that, we also have a lot of different partners. So there's a lot of you who are probably viewing this and a lot of different groups throughout the state who are really supporting the work in Ojai. But more importantly, it's that local organizations and the local agencies and municipalities such as Ojai City that are making our work possible together. So we're really collaborative. I also was asked just to make sure we back up and talk about where are we, where have we been together? Where are we going? I'll try to be really brief. We first came in and talked with Ojai City back in 2017. And we were trying to answer the question, is there any more water to conserve or water to infiltrate? And we did that through a 2018 comparative analysis for reduced consumptive use and recharge. And so through that, we identified not only different opportunities and strategies, of some of which I'll talk about tonight, but also 35 different projects. We went out and created a vision statement and also helped prioritize that criteria. Why is that important? From that bulk of work, we could turn that into an ask for planning and grant awards that came to the city and to the greater watershed. So again, in 2018, we requested some funding from the Wildlife Conservation Board, which Mr. Vega referenced. And $1.8 million was awarded to the entire watershed. Of that, some of the funding was actually awarded to the city of Ojai. So if you look at the map on the right, there's a lot of red dots. Those red dots are a lot of the different planning partners that are part of this effort. It's not just Ojai City, but there's a lot of different partners involved in this grant ask. VRAF is what we call it for short, but its full title really is the Water Management Framework for Instream Flow Enhancement and Water Resiliency, because we want to make sure to help water resiliency at the same time as in-stream flow. Multi-benefits are really important in this kind of work. So from this, we plan on, as far as a roadmap. This is a planning effort right now. We're planning on asking for implementation funds as early as this summer, late summer in 2021. And in 2021 to 2024, implementing a lot of the projects if they haven't already been implemented already. In 2022, the main goal was to then look for some more planning money phase two. I can tell you, there's already conversations about asking for additional planning money and moving up the dial this summer. So this is really our, our roadmap that we've been talking a lot about. What is the VRAF grant? What is this project that we've been talking about? I'm just going to give you a little brief overview. There's four different parts. The first part is to create a framework. And again, the focus of this grant is to help enhance stream flows. But it's not just enhancing stream flows on their own. It's how can we do it and provide water resilience to the community at the same time? And so the first piece is really creating a framework and agreeing, what are the actions we can do together? The second one is, if you look in the lower left quadrant, the planning and design piece. We didn't want to come up with a framework that was not rooted in reality. And so the planning and design is the main piece of this grant. And that's where we're going through and actually helping create planning and design for different constituents. You'll see there's a lot of different partners there. City of Ojai, Ojai Unified School District, Thatcher School, Ojai Valley Inn, The Crew, Ojai Valley Land Conservancy and on, Ojai Groundwater Management Agency. There's a lot of different partners and they're all working to try to come up with different studies or plans that can help enhance string flow and water resilience. So moving over to the, the far right bottom corner is the Agency Landowner Collaborations. That's a segment of the grant as well. And that's because no matter how well we plan or design or create frameworks, sometimes we hit some, some actual policy or permitting hurdles. And so this is really to help streamline and to talk to those agencies and help let them know what innovations and collaborations we're working on. So that's a really key, important piece. And then the top right quadrant is the education and outreach. And those, that's in two different pieces. Now, the first piece is public participation. COVID really, really hit that piece really hard this year. There was supposed to be town halls and a lot of different messaging with those town halls. But because of COVID, we have not been able to do that outreach. So a lot of you may have not heard about VRAF because the COVID has actually affected that outreach. So don't be alarmed, don't dismay, there still is different plans, adaptive plans happening, and that outreach will still occur. So there will be conversations about this with the general public. Also, the, the other piece of the outreach is this Ventura River Water Dashboard, which is really fascinating. And it's going to be a portal for every land steward, land owner. The school, K through 12, public schools will be able to use it to understand how their, their school fits within the watershed and what they can do. Natural resource managers, land managers and water managers will be able to use that dashboard to count their actions towards in-stream flow and really a healthy, resilient watershed. And I should say, just a call out to Eagle Ariel, which is an Ojai company, is leading that piece on the dashboard. So we'll be having an update on that, I think in a couple of months. It's really exciting. So really, we're here, we're here to support a lot of the organizations and partners. And that includes Ojai Valley Green Coalition, of course, Ojai City, a lot of the actors that are already within the grant and a lot of Surf Rider Foundation and others that have already been, really laid the groundwork for a lot of the work that you'll see in the next few slides. I included this just to remind us all, we don't need a reminder that water and our climate adaptive, we're going to feel climate impacts in water. So California is going to feel that. We know that our water supply is at risk from climate impacts. We know that in Ventura County and Ventura River Watershed especially, we have really limited supply options, even though we have a really robust groundwater management authorities. And the other thing in Ojai that we found when we did the comparative analysis is because of the makeup of the land use, the single-family residence has a lot of different options. And so the California Onsite Water Association really has this great graphic and it, it also is from Laura Allen's Waterwise Home, if you're interested, that we could look at different strategies such as how much water falls on the roof, how much water falls on the ground within a site, how much water could we use very easily onsite as gray water? And then also, how can we build soils? And so these are all very local-based solutions. And so we looked at these strategies to see, can they make a difference? Also, something important to note for some of this work is that within the bedroom community, that residential sector, 70% of all that water demand is non-potable. And that means that is up for offsets such as in water, water conservation for the gray water from a washer can go to the outdoors, storm water can be reused outdoors, rainwater can be used for toilets. So there's a lot of options there as far as water conservation. And there's also a lot of opportunity to take that water and actually infiltrate it into the ground and add to the perched aquifer. In our initial 23 assessments, this is real data from Ojai. We found on average 60, over 65,000 gallons on a property could be conserved and reused and then also infiltrated with gray water reuse. Again, these are real numbers, real averages. 36,000 gallons could be conserved and then recharged from rainwater. 34,000 gallons on average could be saved and conserved just by changing out climate appropriate plantings, which I was surprised, a lot of the neighborhoods I see really are doing a great job. Ojai is doing a great job with climate appropriate planting, but there's actually more we can do. And that equates to about 35,000 gallons a year per household. And then recharge, there's still per household 20,000 gallons. That is only of site water falling on that site. That does not include pulling in, run on from the streets or curb cuts. So that's only site water. So it's just real water in Ojai on average. And so we're trying to, we saw these big numbers that Jordan had in his presentation. How much is, how much is an acre foot? How much can the groundwater basin hold? How much water is Ojai using? And a lot of these numbers are really foreign when we start talking in acre feet per year. So first of all, how much is an acre foot? Some of the great conversations we've had with the committees in this Some of the great conversations we've had with the committees in this work have really talked about, like, let's actually visualize what that looks like. And so here's Nordoff's football field, and essentially, an acre foot, just to remind us all, is three hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one gallons. Okay, what does that look like? That essentially can water ten people or between two to four homes, depending on how many people live in the home. And if you take that football field at Nordoff and you stack the water jugs one foot high, that's an acre foot of water, just to give you an idea. So what can we do if we apply that toolkit that we were just looking at? Water conservation, soil building, rain tanks, gray water, and climate-appropriate planting. We can actually, in the residential sector and some built environments, get down to seventy percent reductions and a lot of infiltration. So just to be clear, it's a really kind of fun thought process, how much we can actually reduce and also infiltrate. One of the other studies, working off of the comparative analysis that we did in two thousand eighteen, we looked at different neighborhoods. And land use matters. And so just to give you an illustration, Topa Topa neighborhood, which is mainly a bedroom community, we found in that land use, we could see what those tool potentials are of that toolkit. Now UCSB had already done a study that said gray water was going to be this really great tool in Ojai and Ventura, and we thought, well, okay, let's, let's actually look at it. And sure enough, you already saw some of our numbers earlier, gray water did top out at the second highest tool at ninety-six acre feet per year. Now, that's if everyone put in the gray water systems in that neighborhood. And again, not everyone's going to do that, and not everyone's going to actually optimize it, but maybe fifty percent of the folks will, or ten percent. The climate-appropriate planting or ocean-friendly gardens that I have to really say thank you to Surf Rider for is really the winner here, just selecting the right type of plants that don't need extra water or could be put together with a rain garden for infiltration. That can give us a hundred and forty-five acre feet. And together, just those two highest tools in Topa Topa can reach us to the highest potential of three hundred and forty acre feet per year. And again, how many gallons is that? It's a hundred thousand gallons. So this here is a potential opportunity. This is on the perched aquifer. These type of tools can infiltrate and also, at the same time, give us water resilience and actually some resilience benefit in times of fire and other emergencies and climate adaptations. I do have on the right-hand side, you'll see the downtown south neighborhood. There are different tools that pop out because of land use, and I'm not going to go into that study tonight. I just wanted to make sure we're clear how these tools are used. And again, it's really important that the premise of this work is based on the Ojai perched aquifer that Ojai City is really located on, the work of Keir Groundwater and the Ojai Groundwater Management Agency. And again, what is a rain garden? A lot of what we're talking about is infiltrating, slowing and spreading and sinking it. A lot of you have heard this mantra. A lot of really fantastic folks have come to Ojai and talked about it. Tom Ash, who we lost last year, Brock Dolman. There's a lot of great management about rain gardens and just slowing and spreading and sinking it. A lot of people discount this methodology because it's small. However, in aggregate, it can really add up, especially in the city landscape on that perched aquifer. This is Bezzent Hill, by the way, beautiful school. I threw this one in for our mayor. And here's a picture of a rain garden infiltrating and creating habitat, fire resilience, and potentially in-stream flow habitat. So here's the update. I'm going to just go over these four projects. Nicole Stern will go over project number three. Project number one and two, I'm actually lumping together. They are very similar projects, and we'll talk about those. Again, project three is Signal and Grand Stormwater Park, with the addition of one more, hopefully. And project number four is really the Waterwise Recharge Incentive Program. How do we make what we're learning available to all the neighborhoods within the sphere of influence of Ojai? So project number one and two, you can see here are outlined. In brown is Topa Topa, project number one. Project number two is outlined in blue, and that's downtown south. And project number three is Signal Street, and project number four is the entire sphere of influence. You can, this is an actually updated map as of today of what projects are going on within those two different regions. Okay, here we go. And so the idea between project number one and two is merely to look at how to infiltrate and recharge the most amount of water that we can on a parcel-by-parcel basis. And that includes a couple of different strategies. One, it includes talking to actual and reaching out to landowners and land stewards and helping provide designs and plans for those properties that have the highest optimum value of recharging and providing demonstration. Secondly, also to create curb cuts, which I'll talk about. These values of infiltrating within that project number one and two, infiltrating and creating those rain gardens and gray water infiltration and others has not just the acre foot of water benefit. It gives those landowners and those neighborhoods and those communities reduced flooding risk and other multiple benefits, fire resilience, habitat benefits. So it's not just about the acre foot of water, although at the same time, there is this great net benefit to the perched aquifer system and creates demonstration. So what do you get if you sign up and you actually become a participant within this program? You get an actual LiDAR map of where you sit within your neighborhood. You have an integrated concept design based on all the different things that can actually benefit your property. We really focus on infiltration-based projects. At the same time, we do identify these other project types that can help that landowner really gain resilience. And again, this grant is mainly about in-stream flow, but also about water resilience. So you can see here the different toolkit, just like on those neighborhood maps I showed you, and how those elements are integrated within a site to create resilience. And this is really a database design approach. And here's an example of what this catalog of projects looks like on a property where we can have not only infiltration to help that perched aquifer, but at the same time, we can create fire resilience by hydrating around the perimeter, pollinator corridors, which is so important right now to our crashing pollinator species, and we can create food security at the same time. So again, this is climate adaptation at its best, and it also provides relief right where we live and where we work and play. And so these demonstration projects are really critical. Here's an example of one of the projects that was a collaborative. And this project was given guidance to move forward and a map, just like what you saw. And the landowner went ahead on their own and went ahead and installed the project. And here you can see a rain garden slash bioswale filling up with one of the first rains of the winter with freshly new planted plants. This was a turf lawn prior to that. And here's some of the concept plans for that project. Curb cuts, we also looked at curb cuts within this project and whether or not that was a strategy that would be beneficial. And so within those two neighborhoods, we actually went through and estimated the potential quantity and locations of those curb cuts. We also went through and came up with what the standard details and costs benefit for each type of curb cut. What is a curb cut? I think a lot of them, a lot of you know and have seen them around the city of Ojai. What we came at is really the best system is to have an Eddy-based system with a bioswale, meaning those plants clean that water that enters off the street before going into the perched aquifer, and then always having an allowance to leave that site in case we get a really high intensive storm event, so there's no flooding. We have a primary screening list. I just left this in here so that the folks online could download this. I'm not going to go over it tonight. And a secondary screening list of different criteria. This is all within the report that we submitted to the city. We identified in those two neighborhoods where all those curb cut locations were and what the highest tiers for feasibility would be in each neighborhood. And we also include a map, a map book of each location and tier. Also, in project one and two, we went through and actually assisted with PAX Environmental on Stewart Creek to come up, what is the amount of water that would be available for ecological stream flow enhancement based on just removal of some of these invasive species? And so that report has also been submitted to the city as a deliverable, and it ends up to be around, depending on the water year, eight point eight acre feet per year. So again, that's eight football fields per year of stream flow. So with project number three, I'm going to introduce Nicole Stern, my colleague, and she can go over where we're at and the status. I just want to make a, this is where, I want to make a remark. We did believe that we had a much greater impact on or potential to infiltrate stormwater at Signal Street. And so we had pursued this project with the Wildlife Conservation Board. As we started getting into the planning and the site constraints and the soils, we're realizing that we are not going to have as great of impact with stormwater at this site. It's not that it will have no impact, it will have an impact. It's not as great as we would like. So after conversations with our team and the city and the Wildlife Conservation Board, we found that we can still go ahead with the Signal project, but we have an opportunity to add another project at Libby Park. And so Nicole will go ahead and give you the information. We would like to go ahead and add Libby Park stormwater conveyance to project three. And this is a question of the council to make sure that that's okay. It is fine with our grantor, and there will be no extra funds needed to add this site to project three. So it's essentially a two-for-one, essentially, no out-of-pocket cost to the city. And I'll let Nicole Stern, our landscape architect, take it over from here and explain our update.
Thanks, Regina. Hello, everybody. Go ahead and advance the slide. So as Regina discussed, the Signal Street and Grand Avenue parcel that the city owns is one of the VRAF priority projects. You can see here, we did a sub watershed analysis. There's quite a few large subwatersheds flowing to this site and flowing into pipes that cross under the site that have the ability to be daylighted, as well as capturing some of the road runoff through curb cuts. Next slide. These are a few existing site condition photos. I think this is, you can just skip over this one. It's similar to the last one. So.
What happened to the other slide? The one with the apartments at the top of Signal and Grand? I just wanted, okay, can we look at this for a moment?
Sure.
Was there a reason why you skipped it?
Skip this slide?
Yeah.
Oh, these are just existing site condition photos. Yes, there are apartments surrounding the site here. This, the open space here is the actual site. You can see there's a very large oak tree that takes up maybe a third or more of the site. That's a gorgeous co-sly oak. There's, I don't think very much used, there's one bench sort of in the center of the site right now, and some electrical guy wires.
Well, it just, I mean, maybe we can't discuss it now, but it just seems like this site has so much potential, and there's so many kids living in those apartments. It just seems like we have to do something with that site.
Yeah. I'd love to address that when we show this concept plan here, because that was definitely in our thoughts with the design priorities. So the city expressed that they would love to have a pocket park on this site, and there's a great opportunity with our stormwater motivations to incorporate some natural play while also managing stormwater. There's, you know, there's not a ton of space, but we can really maximize the use of this through having some playful elements, such as the bioswales and the rain garden become a double usable space with nature play. We're showing some logs crossing the rain garden for balancing and some rocky features that could be used for seating or climbing in. Also, we're showing, because we'll have to remove soil to lower the elevation of the rain garden, we can mound around the edges of the site and create some fun sort of small mounds for climbing and also to sort of shelter the site from the road that surrounds it and the neighboring property. We would have seating along a few decomposed granite pathways that would be curving through the site. And we're showing sort of an innovative strategy of daylighting the storm drains that are crossing under the site and letting them overflow both into dry wells that would help infiltrate into that perched aquifer that we've been discussing, and also overflow into bioswales that join this rainwater system. And the planting would be drought-tolerant, native, but also very showy and flowering for pollinator habitat. Regina, you want to switch to the next slide? So we have a fun photo simulation here. This is the existing site. And this is sort of our vision of some fun elements here on the site with children being able to explore, people being able to sit and enjoy the planting and the rain garden and some color and playful elements here.
Wait, is that Suzie sitting on the bench?
How'd you know? The next slide? So you can go back one. I was just orienting on that map where the red arrow is, that's sort of the angle. So from different sides, you would get different elements. This is not showing everything, but anticipating that the large oak tree in the back would provide opportunities for picnicking under and be relatively untouched. Next slide. Here's a section showing the buried pipe daylighting into a fire retention bioswale and some curb cuts that would flow into that as well. Next slide. The playful elements of the large logs going over the rain garden. Next one. And again, this would be sort of a chain system of flow from taking the road runoff and the pipes overflowing, and then three different dry wells on the site, also infiltrating water down to thirty feet potentially. Next slide. This is just an example of some educational signage that Watershed Progressive has helped put together, and that would be a big emphasis that the park would be a demonstration site for the surrounding homeowners. Next one. And as Regina mentioned, we are hoping to add a second site under the same funding source so that we can maximize the stormwater potential. And we've identified a location in Libby Park that's nearby. So this is showing the creeks and channels in Ojai on the left map there, and also showing how those translate into the Libby Park site in the center map here, showing where there's pipes, the green dots are the pipes. The green, green dots are the pipes outletting onto Libby Park and the red ones are pipe inlets that pop out lower in the channel. So you can see there's an eastern and a western sort of bronca channel flowing through the site. And again, we have another sub watershed analysis trying to analyze how much flow are going to those points in acre, acre feet per year. And we're also estimating that there's about nine to 15 miles of daylighted channels throughout the city that are over the perched aquifer. Next slide Regina. So we started getting interested in this stretch of the stream channel that's in the eastern Ojai Creek on Libby Park. You'll see this is near the, the existing pedestrian bridge that leads across near the playground. Next slide. And we wanted to introduce this idea of a treatment called regenerative stormwater conveyance. This is a pretty well established technique that you can apply to creek channels that have steep banks or are eroding. And it's a combination of creek restoration, but also has a huge stormwater benefit in retaining stormwater and improving water quality. And so as the water flows down the channel, these series of boulder structures and smaller rock structures will slow the water and filter it and help drop pollutants out of it. Next slide. This is just a document showing in the Chesapeake Bay region, this, this practice is very well documented and supported by, by a lot of different municipalities. Next one. And so here's a concept plan of some treatments we're proposing in the stretch of Libby Park, both the regenerative stormwater conveyance as well as a demonstration rain garden that would happen on the edge of the, the upper tennis courts. On the right, there's a rendering showing the, that bridge section and sort of the, the treatment of the regenerative stormwater conveyance. Next slide. And again, this pilot project site we're proposing to try out this treatment is about 250 linear feet, but the total east channel that it flows into is 1,200 linear feet. The western channel flowing through the park is about 1,300. All the channels in Libby Park together are about 2,500. And you can keep multiplying this practice out to the nine to 15 miles of open channel within the perched aquifer in Ojai. So the benefit of, of this tool could really be expanded based on pilot project here. Next one Regina. So again, this is just showing that existing channel. You can see that there's some erosion happening, not a lot of great understory native plants. There's been some efforts at controlling invasive plants on the site. And then this is our vision of implementing these, these step pools that would slow down the water, delay that stormwater getting to the bronca to the south and hydrate the landscape and incorporate native plants. Next slide. And this is just some examples of this treatment being used elsewhere and showing the potential it has to stop erosion from pipe inlets and stabilize a creek channel system. Next one. And this is going to be applied within Libby Park. There are a lot of different creek widths, so this is applicable for really wide portions of the channel and very narrow eroding areas. Again, just a couple more examples here, same pictures before. The next slide here. And this is just some data from a study on these treatments showing how they can positively benefit peak flow in simulating pre-development system in a creek channel. And then this is the site near the tennis courts that we're proposing a demonstration rain garden. And this would be again, another small site, but it could have a lot of impact because it gets so much traffic. There's seems to be sheet flow coming off of the tennis courts and the pathways. And there's little signs of erosion and a catch basin that drains directly to the creek. So next slide Regina. So again, here proposing that we do a beautiful rain garden with some really great native plants and that, you know, all of the parkgoers and tennis players would experience this rain garden as a demonstration. Couple more examples of beautiful rain gardens that are wonderful for demonstration and pollinator habitat and the native plants that are opportunity. And I will pass it back to Regina for project four.
Thank you, Nicole. So I'm just going to wrap up. I know these are a lot of slides. Thank you for your patience. Project four, the best way to think about this is everything that we're, these strategies that we're trying to promote and the strategies that we're finding really can work within not just downtown south and Topa Topa, but to be able to apply them throughout the sphere of influence is really best done with an incentive program. And so that was the project number four for the Ventura Instream Flow Framework Grant. And so with that was really the development of how to outreach and create that program. And the land resilience partnership, which you saw the video when we first opened, is part of the, the outreach elements. And then also the way that others can get involved is to sign up with this land resilience partnership through the city of Ojai and also a cosponsor, the Ventura County Resource Conservation District and get support and guidance through this program. And this, this project four has a couple different deliverables, including site assessments, design plans for the sphere of influence, permitting as needed to help come up with design templates and guidance materials, which I'll show you a few of. Come up with this incentive program, land resilience partnership and add value to it and customize it for the Ojai Valley and create website materials such as the video that you saw, flyers and different icons, visual language. And then lastly, create potential ordinance and general plan language as needed from what were our findings at the end of the grant. And some of the templates that we've already created that have been delivered to Ojai City are gray water templates. They're made as a really a user, over the counter users manual that are custom to the Ojai Valley. And so that a landowner, sophisticated landowner can be able to actually go through and install these gray water systems or rainwater systems or rain gardens based on these templates or curb cuts. So again, these are all delivered to the city of Ojai at this point, and I think we're still working on one more. So these are available for review. And some of the other pieces that are products from this stage four, project number four are flyers messaging. And so really making sure that we understand that these strategies can really help not only hydrate that perched aquifer, that can give us these other benefits like pollinator corridors, equitable access, food resilience, hydrated fuel breaks if designed correctly with the right guidance. So again, these are all local solutions. This can create a local workforce. It can use local people and really help local habitats to thrive. Flyers are also have been created, toolkits. You can see the list of different tools that are based on these really simple, easy to use strategies that have been identified, along with a myriad of different multiple benefits, all that really help the citizens of Ojai Valley to really look at climate adaptation while, you know, hydrating our street trees, our habitats and providing resilience toward the watershed. You already saw the, the video. There's a few other videos that are in the works that will be really fun for, that are collaborative coming up. I wanted to make a call out, there is a podcast that's shared with the land resilience partnership. And if you go onto the website, we're on podcast number three, I believe. But just special attention to podcast number two, Tom Ash, which did a lot of great water work and we lost him last year, but we did do a really great podcast interview with him and his old boss from a water agency, Martha Davis. Again, just pulling it all back together, we can, we can really do this here in Ojai. The, the land use in Ojai really speaks to that we can be resilient while we reach habitat, restoration and resilience and really making ourselves more resilient and self-reliant for the future. So there's a lot of these really easy water strategies. And it's not just about, as a wise man once said, it's not just about an acre foot of water. It's about an acre foot of water and all the other levers that come out of that strategy. And we're going to build community, jobs, workforce, habitat through some really simple community solutions. And so I just really want to applaud the council for this effort and supporting it over time. I know that it, it really has been a longer relationship, but I'm really looking forward to the future and what we can do together in Ojai Valley. So with that, I don't have any more slides, but I do want to make sure that I am clear on our request. We're trying to understand if we can go forward on Libby Park and design that regenerative stormwater conveyance.
Thank you Regina. Thank you Nicole. Beautiful work. Any questions, Randy?
Regina, when you, when you were developing the site up at Besse and Hills, I know they put in three dorms, probably capable of handling 30 to 40 students at a time. Was, was there any connection between how much water savings you could have, you could generate out of reusing all of the water that, that, that those dorms are generating? So you, it looked like you did a small rain garden, but was there a calculation? Did they buy into, like you said, if we have, if a, if a human beings consumes 150 gallons a day and 70% of that is reusable, did you set aside 70 so many percentage of feet to be used in the outside to actually reclaim that water?
So for Besse and Hill, they actually do have a water management resilience plan. And we did help them with that. And within that plan, we did go through and actually look at how much non potable water can we reuse in the forms of black water and gray water and mechanical water? There's a little known mechanical or condensate water, which again is interesting because we generate condensate usually when it's hot and that's when plants need it. So we looked at that. We also looked at how much water fell on the reefs of the dorms and all of the buildings. And so for them, I believe it was about 68% of all water there could be offset through the non potable, either reuse or rainwater and stormwater.
Did they do it?
Yep. They're, they're in process. They're in process. So yes, these things, I would love to say we could do these overnight and just implement. And I think on the residential scale, it's a little bit easier, but on the commercial scale, we definitely do need a plan to make sure we think through and master plan these things correctly.
Well, why I ask you that question is, are there ratios available is, as we move forward in our community, repurposing our community? How do we write into our codes if we can? How we can achieve this new percentages either based on the number of people living in a dwelling, how many square feet of the property? Those are the questions I think that all of us have and need to know. You know, obviously I appreciate you demonstrating what an acre foot of water looks like. It'd been great if I'd taken four adults and compared that to how many acre feet of water I could conserve or reuse. So I'm just saying that there, there's got to be a formula and that's, I think is what we would be looking as a council, is how can we take that information and build it into our codes so that we're doing this in a manner that allows us to progressively move through our community at a pace that people can afford to redo these forms of rejuvenation?
And I, Randy, I think you're really hitting it right on the head here. And through, through the comparative analysis, we have a lot of that information, what we've done since then by going out to say Topa Topa neighborhood, downtown south and the sphere of influence. We're refining by ground truthing those numbers. And so by the end of this grant, which will be next winter, we will be able to have those numbers ground truthed for you. So I think we'll be able to deliver that actually to you in the form of recommendations. We don't want to do it until we spend enough, we get enough statistical numbers to actually make it correct.
And then mayor, my last question is, on the LRP partnership, is there a cost associated to the consumer?
Currently, no, depending on how far the funding is granted. So right now we have funding for planning. We don't have funding for implementation, although I want to make it a real clear note, a lot of the landowners that have already participated have gotten the guidance in the planning and they're installing these systems on their own. So there's a cost share, there's a leverage to that. A lot of the landowners just wanted to understand what it is that they could do and what, what the larger benefit was. Oh, I didn't know I could, if I hydrated this, I could put in a fire resilience buffer strip or I could do fire resilient base planting at the same time as have a rain garden and create pollinator corridors.
Well, I, I appreciate the fact that, that, that people, consumers are, you know, are communities doing that. I just wanted to clarify to the, to, to the everyday homeowner that owns an 80 by 80 lot in town, that this partnership is hedged on grant funding down the road. However, if you partner up early and you get some form of design from your, from the existing grant money, that you can now either wait for funding or you can implement yourself. I just wanted to be clear on that.
Correct. And so this is a highly fundable item. Folks who want to wait for grant funding can wait. And it is highly fundable and we will probably be able to, to bring grant funding to them. If they don't want to wait and they like the idea of the plans, they can hire local contractors and install right away. Or they can install on their own. Those templates are really made to help the do it yourselfers move forward and be able to incentivize action right away and transformation, which a lot of people are doing. And I really, I want to, I want to make sure I mention the land resilience partnership has been funded multiple times over. It has gotten over $3.3 million in the Northern California area. It has been widely received in other locations. So this is something that we're customizing to Ojai. It is something that I believe the Wildlife Conservation Board and other grant partners will fund very easily. The State Water Resources Control Board, just, we just got funding for Northern California of $3.8 million additionally for that. So it's a very fundable item. It will bring monetary relief to those who don't have their own funds to move forward. At the same time, I think we do need, it's really interesting to see how many people just really need to know what to do. They just need help to understand what to do. And I think there's a workforce development piece in this. I think again, this is the way chiming in with your climate resilience committee work. This is really climate adaptation at its finest while you're creating in-stream flow enhancements on that perched aquifer. It's a win-win. You're, you're really helping to create that healthy, resilient community with these really low hanging fruit strategies.
Well, I also, I'm glad you brought that in, but the last thing, I had said that before, but the last thing is again, is right, how? But the last thing is, again, is right, how, how we can take this information and write it into our codes and our policy. I know that somewhere in here you said something about general plans. I'm not sure how, how you mandate through your general plan, but your ordinances that we write and the policies that the council puts forth, there's, 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 has to be ways to bring this about in a manner that people in this community can afford and feel comfortable doing versus being told to do it. You know, it's the option of this is what's best for us and you. Let's figure out how to do it together. So.
Agreed. Agreed. And, and we were leaving that for, you know, we were leaving the recommendations towards the end of our project work so that we could base them on what we're actually seeing. And so they were real recommendations, not based on pie in the sky model work. So I think, I think those recommendations towards the end of the, the project, which would be again, next winter, should hopefully really be, you know, working in concert with everything that the city is doing.
Thank you. Great job. Great presentation.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Bill?
60 seconds. Time's, you know. Thank you very much, Regina, and thank you for mentioning Tom. I miss him. Tom Ash. I really do. Inspiring man. For, for those of you who don't know about Tom Ash, he's one of the main players behind significant, large-scale sustainability efforts in Orange County, model for the whole state, really. Let's not forget, someday, let's find some funding to convert the Pratt Canyon debris brace it into a stormwater retention metered release. Big bang for the buck if we could find the money for that. We kind of tend to overlook that big bowl up there that could do so much for in-stream flow support in Stewart Creek and San Antonio Creek. So another one of my dreams. And the idea of what this work is so important, especially this, I think, well, in so many ways. But the curb cuts, we can integrate that into our street program in terms of a permanent planning approach. And the same with the regenerative stormwater conveyance. We demonstrate that in Libby Park. And then we move into both private and other private and public stream courses throughout the city. It'd make a huge difference. And there's more actual spring courses that are shown on this map. We are so dense in terms of spring courses.
Right.
So anyway, thank you very much.
Any more, Suzie, you have a question? Will you unmute yourself, Suzie, please?
My dogs are barking suddenly. Sorry. Yeah, do we need a motion to include Libby Park? And you need to explain that more? But you said there was no additional cost or what's needed?
Can we just finish the, the questions and then we'll do public comment and then we can do that?
Okay. All right.
Any other question? I just have, you'd mentioned you want to do a town hall. You were thinking about a Zoom town hall, Regina? Great.
Well, so we, we have two different avenues. Cheryl Dahl with Flip Labs is running our BRAF outreach. So I know she's going to be looking at some town halls. So that's one avenue. We're also doing a reprise, which will also be in concert with Cheryl Dahl, of Localizing California Waters, which those of you who attended, I believe it was almost two years ago, last April, at Ojai Valley Inn, will be doing a reprise of that. And so there's going to be two different versions. One is April 29th and 30th, which will be a statewide, in fact, quite frankly, there's a lot of international folks coming, virtual event, which will be statewide, which we will be inviting all the Ojai public to. And that's a literacy build. That means you can start at ground zero and not know anything and just be able to learn and understand what these, how these approaches and strategies can work. And so there'll be a lot of entry level pieces. And then we'll also have a Ventura, essentially Ventura River watershed conversation right thereafter. So there are those opportunities that would be quickly approaching. And hopefully we will be able to bring council, apprised council as soon as we can. And I know we are about to pull the steering committee for the LCW Localizing California Waters piece.
Great. Thanks. Any public comment on, oh, you have a question, Suzie?
Question. First of all, I apologize that I interrupted when you showed that lot at the, at North Signal and Grand. I thought you were going right into Libby Park. So I was so happy to see that. I was overjoyed. But how, if, if things move along, how soon could the public, how soon could that be happening realistically?
Well.
You know, all the things you've shown, all the beautiful things that you've shown.
Well, well, quite, quite frankly, I believe that we're going to be finalized. And I, I talked with Nicole, who's the lead of that project. We should be final on those designs and ready to request implementation funds by this summer. So again, if, if those are private monies that come into play, that could happen as quickly as the city is ready to. If it's state monies, those typically take a year. So it would be 2022.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, any public comment, Gail?
No public comments.
All right. Well, then.
No one signed up. No verbal comments.
I will move to include the regenerative stormwater conveyance component demonstration in Libby Park into the program.
I'll second it.
Randy can second. Good.
Hey, may we have a vote, please, Gail?
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wierich?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Yay. All right. Well, thanks. Thank you so much, Regina. That's so exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fabulous. Fabulous. Thank you.
Great. Great. And if I could just say, can I say one more just phrase? I also want to make sure that I can send it out to all of Ojai Valley, but especially to the council. I mean, I, I'm really appreciative and I know that, I know now from the work that you've made this opportunity available. I, I'm really quite enlightened by the resourcefulness of all the Ojaians. So I know we can do this. I, I know that there's actual, this, this approach of low-hanging fruit strategies is going to bring climate resilience and adaptation and stream flow enhancement to the door of Ojai. It's going to bring a lot of different benefits. And so I'm going to help, I want to just help and thank you for the opportunity.
Feelings mutual and we'll continue the long-term relationship.
I, I moved to the region. You guys got me. So I'm, I'm here to help. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Regina.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye.
That's exciting. Okay, next we have OBGMA. This is number four, the nested monitoring water well. City manager?
Yeah, thank you. And I, Jordan spoke to some of the importance of this earlier. So I'll, I'll give some background quickly. But essentially, OBGMA, the Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency, submitted a well permit application to the city recently for a nested monitoring well that would be within the city limits on Fulton. And our city code requires that each water well application that comes, that comes to the city be scheduled for a hearing before the city council and that the city council either grant or deny that application. There is, although there is currently a moratorium and prohibition on new water supply wells, it does not apply to monitoring wells. And so the moratorium and prohibition does not apply here. OBGMA proposes to install it on the city right of way, which will require an encroachment permit from the city. In that encroachment permit, the city staff will work with OBGMA to make sure that things like noise and other issues are mitigated and the impact is minimal. And so with that, like I said, Jordan spoke earlier to, and showed us examples of all the monitoring that they're doing and what these are used for. In short, it's, it can be used to detail the, the layers in the hydrogeology in the basin. And it can also be used to show other conditions such as quality and reduction in aquifer storage. So, so with, with all that in mind, the city staff has recommended that the city council approve the application. I believe, and authorize that the city manager to take the necessary actions to implement it. And I believe Jordan is available and stayed on the meeting in case there's any questions. And with that, I'll turn it over to council.
Any questions?
May I? Oh, I'm not muted. Okay. I did note that you're going to do the, you recommend that you'll time the work to daytime high noise threshold hours. So I'm assuming that's between after nine o'clock in the morning or something like that?
I believe per code, per code, I think it's actually 7:00 AM. But we, we, I'll work with the Public Works Director to make sure that we condition it as carefully as we can.
And there'll be, and I think it's so important to notify the, the neighborhood so they can plan their life, you know, if they work at home, they're right next to the noise, you know? That's all I have.
We can do that. We'll look at the timing and we'll, and notification. And I believe we're expecting it to be five days, March 15th to March 19th.
Just a real, a comment, Jordan could correct me if I'm wrong, but they, at the OBGMA board meeting, we also discussed a, a lower impact approach to the drilling, not a traditional full-size well, a well drilling apparatus. Is that true, Jordan?
Yes, that, that is true. The approach here is to use a sonic continuous core machine as opposed to a rotary, muddy, dirty, noisy, tall type of drilling rig that is more typical for, for water supply wells. And I, I just wanted to offer a bit of a correction on the date. Because the OBGMA will be putting this item on the agenda for a categorical exemption this coming Thursday meeting. That requires a 35-day clearinghouse residency time. So it'll be actually the first full week of April that the well would be drilled.
And, and so with that, if it's appropriate, Mayor, I'm going to offer a motion to approve.
Well, I have one more question.
I'm sorry.
How deep do you, do you sense you're going to be drilling there? What's the depth?
The current bid that we have from the, from the drillers is for a 280-foot deep well. We'd like to go as deep as the budget will allow. So we may extend that upwards of 500 or 600 feet, which would be great. We can get all the way through the, through all, not just the perched aquifers, but the intermittent aquifers, the production aquifers, and then confirm bedrock underneath that, which would be ideal. We'll see what it actually ends up being because, you know, every borehole is exploration. And we're looking forward to presenting to the city a nice stratified column of, of what lies beneath.
Yeah, my, my understanding of that area is got a, one has got a real high water table. It's probably got some of the worst soil conditions in Ojai. That's why I was wondering the, the depth and the scope of what you were looking for. So I'm all for it. So I'm ready for Bill's motion.
I made it. You want a second?
No public comment?
That's correct, Mayor. Well, before any vote, we'll have to take public comment if any.
There are no public commenters.
Okay. Motion? We have a motion and we have it seconded. Can we vote? Please, Gail?
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wierich?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Great. Exciting. Thank you, Jordan, for staying and we're excited about this project.
Come and visit anytime.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor, can we take a, a three-minute break?
Let's take a break and I'll come back in three minutes. Thanks, Gail. Everybody back? Okay, we're all, oh, no, Randy's not here. Randy, my man.
Let's get started anyway.
Okay. Maybe he's out building a bio swale or something. Okay, well, moving on, we are at number five, ADU, the two-year extension. James, you want to, city managers?
Yes, thank you. So we, the, the next item is the. So we, the next item is the ADU second unit compliance, potential extension of that program. The program was initially created, it's the, the second unit compliance program was initially created on April 9th, 2013. One of the goals was to allow for production improvement and preservation of affordable housing by allowing the legalization of pre-existing unpermitted second units that have been built within the city. The program has been extended a few times, most recently on February 26, 2019. We extended it to March 8, 2021, which is prior to our next meeting. So we brought it back for council to consider whether to extend it again. And council has the option to extend it for an additional term, you know, of two years or any alternate term that the council chooses or to not extend it at all. Just quickly, we wanted to note, and I wanted to make sure it was clear, the report has some statistics on the units as of 2019 and then as of 21. Those are not, it notes, for example, that in 2019, when we last adopted the extension, we had 54 legalized and final ADUs through the, through the program. Since then, we've had an additional 20, so that's the number that shows 74 total. So we've had 20 additional units in two years. And then we've had 13 additional applications in two years. We've gone from 74 applications to 87 applications. And so there are some that are still working their way through the process, but we have issued 74 permits for these. So, so it's been somewhat successful. And the question before council today is whether to extend, not extend, or potentially modify the program. And so with that, I'll turn it back over to council.
James, Randy, and then Bill, and then Suzha? Will you unmute yourself?
Yeah, you're muted, Councilmember Haney.
James, what do you mean when you say working through the process? Because I'm a little lost on it, on how this works. Do we have a duration, an expected duration of the permitting process and then the actual installation and then the actual finish? Or is it an open-ended book?
No, so there is like, there is a planning review and a planning checklist. So 74 of 87, 74 have been finalled out of 87 total applications. And we have a couple that we're still reviewing, which, you know, the reviewing means we need to inspect it, and then we have a checklist that we work through of building and planning, potential building and planning issues. So we have a couple that are still potentially going through the process.
Okay, thank you.
Bill, you have a question?
Yes. This was actually the first project I took on when I started getting involved with city government. And I'm really kind of proud of it because every one of these counts towards arena as affordable by design. I believe that's still the case. And that is really important. I mean, just from a sustainability standpoint, already built, there's no additional infill, but you're getting, you know, you're taking that pressure off us by getting some safety basics put in place. And again, counts towards arena affordable by design. So it's a, it's a great program that still has not reached its potential. And one of the major impediments, as documented by housing and community development in the state, is the fact that the sanitation district is still in the view of this regulatory state agency charging capacity fees illegally on these programs. And I just want to read into the record real quick from the HCD letter last November, and the sanitary district is still working through getting into compliance with state law. The district's regulations, this is the HCD, the district's regulations do not comply with these requirements and thus appear to be impermissible. This appears to be borne out in the district's practices as HD, HCD understands that the district charges a combined connection fee of roughly $16,000 for all residential users, including ADUs, regardless of their size or their proportionate burden on the district using the methodology prescribed by law. The district's regulations and current free structure is not legally sound, subjects the district to significant legal risk, is serving as a significant impediment, that's what's most important to us, to housing in this current housing crisis and must be modified to conform to statute. In other words, the sanitary district right now is going through the process, as I understand it, of finally removing this significant impediment to our pursuit of our housing element as it stands now, and I think will be part of our housing element going forward. The count in the last housing element was several hundred of these were eligible. We were about a third of the way through. And I really am an advocate for extending this because I think if the sanitary district finally gets this capacity charge straightened out, we're going to see even more participation.
Is he, a question? And then, like, Randy?
No, it's just a comment of why. I wanted to read the letter from HCD into the record. It's a public, it's a public document. And it's not just our opinion, it's the opinion of the agency that rules on the compliance of housing elements for every city, that the sanitation district is, has an illegal impediment to this program, that it needs to be cured.
Susan?
Mayor, I had two questions for James. James, do we have a rough count of actually how many of these units are existing today in the community?
Existing that we have not, that have not come in yet?
Right.
No, we don't, we don't have a rough count of that.
There was an estimate in the last housing element, and Suzha's next.
Yeah, we do, we do believe that there are still several, but I don't have an exact.
So we don't have, we don't have any method through code enforcement or through anything of that nature to actually identify garage conversions or, you know, room additions or any other enhancement to a property that hasn't applied for an ADU or any of that nature. So I guess what, my concern with this is we keep extending it, and I don't, I don't have a, I don't have a sense of how we're enhancing people or how we're motivating people to actually do this. I mean, we have a housing crisis in this community. There isn't a one of us who won't agree to that. And one of the, and one of the methodologies of removing that would be to get more ADUs certified. Now, I know Bill's statement on the $16,000 impediment, but that's just one, you still have to have, you still have to identify structures that have to be brought into compliance. And two, offer them an opportunity to do it, but you also have to give them a timeframe to do it in. So, you know, I'm not sure how we, well, that's my statement, then I'll, when we come back to deliberate, I'll bring up another, you know, another concern.
Questions, Suzha?
Yes. Well, in some ways, my question is related to Randy's. The report on the last page, page three, states that there was one person whose unit was not in existence prior to July 28, 2015. My question is, what happened to him? And what happens to all the other units that have since been built? Because the more we extend this, the more there's apt to be other units after that date. Can we change this criteria? Can we legally change that criteria tonight?
The reason why I would, so I would recommend not changing it at this point. And the reason being, so the people that, the people that are building an ADU after this date are, they're, they can get them permitted, it's just not through the, you know, I don't want to call it an amnesty program, but a lot of places call these amnesty programs. It's, you know, so if the, if the unit was pre-existing before we had this program, we let them go through this program. But if it's a newly built ADU, we work with them through just standard permitting. So it's not that they can't do it, it's just they don't qualify for this, this kind of, you know, the grandfathering program, you know.
If I could add one quick point to that, Mayor, council, the existing second unit ordinance is what has that date of June, pardon me, June 23, 2015, has to, the ADU issue has to have been built before that date. Council could act to extend the window later, but doing so would require coming back with an ordinance amendment, amending that line in the code in the second unit ordinance, which of course could be done by separate ordinance, not tonight. That ordinance also does allow the date to be extended by resolution, and that's what's proposed tonight.
Okay, but I'm not, thank you, that was extremely helpful, I needed to know this. But James, so did this man that didn't, or this family, whatever, that didn't qualify, did they then go through another process? Or are they still living in their, with their illegal unit?
You know, I'm not, I'm not sure how that would ended up, if he went through the other permitting process, or if he, yeah, if he just didn't get it permitted, so we could follow up on that, and we can report that back.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't necessarily want him to get in trouble. I would like to make it so that, because he can't be the only one. There's so much time has gone by with all these extensions. I don't know how the rest of the council feels, I'd like to know if they will have, I mean, the goal is to have as many safe, legal accessory drilling units as possible. And if this is a hindrance to bring the other ones up to code, perhaps we should reconsider the time. I'm just waiting to hear what others think.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, as the city attorney said, we can do that, we just have to bring an ordinance back to do it.
Any other questions, Randy?
So do we still have the, is it the ob, ob-ombudsman? I can't pronounce that name.
They, we don't have an ombudsman currently, so, you know, that is, that is a challenge, and that's something, you know, council could, you know, direct us to find an ombudsman. You know, we, we have, essentially, our building team is, you know, is serving that role, which I think, it would be fair to say that some people probably are not as comfortable with, or they're not as comfortable with the building official or the building inspector as they would be with an ombudsman.
Yeah, I would, I can see us actually looking for someone with some building official experience, maybe someone retired, lives in the community that would be willing to take this on. I think that's what, I think that's one of the impediments is, I know I need to do something, but I'm not sure what I need to do, and then I need to know how much it's going to cost me. So that's one thing. The second thing is just going back to Bill's comment, how can we pursue legally getting some judgment or something, some form of standing regarding the sanitation district's fee? And, and then what can we do as a city to say, you know, we're not going to allow you to charge that fee? So what can we do? Is Matt?
So, two steps. Step one is the council could authorize me to send a letter reiterating the same concerns as HCD and threatening further action if not already take, if they don't fix it. If they refuse or are inadequately fast in fixing their fee issue, then council could consider initiating litigation, which would obviously be a closed session discussion. So my suggestion would be, we start with a letter and then put that on a future agenda for the council to consider.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
How does the rest of the council feel about bringing the ordinance back and changing the July, July 28, 2015 date?
That would be a future agenda item. I would suggest we get the resolution handled first, and then we talk about that as a future agenda item.
Okay, any public comment, Gail?
No public comments.
May I offer a motion?
Please do.
I'm going to offer a motion, following Randy's lead, to approve the two-year extension as recommended by staff and have our city attorney draft a, a letter for us to consider a future board meeting, future council meeting, excuse me.
I'll second that.
Maybe if a vote, Gail, please?
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
I have a question. Did we handle the second part?
Not your proposal, Suzha, that would be, now would be the right moment.
Yeah, now's the time.
If you wanted to ask if there's support for that to come back, staff could prepare a resolution for, or ordinance rather, for council consideration with support.
That's what I want to do. Well, I want to make a motion that, of what you just said.
A motion to direct ordinance to, staff to prepare an ordinance extending the, moving, shifting the must-be-built-by date.
Yeah.
Would that would be the motion. Did you have a date that you wanted that to be extended to?
I think, well.
Draft an ordinance with a blank.
Yeah, or, and staff could recommend a date based on what they know, or unless the council has, another council member has a date, just.
I, I would recommend, if, we'll do some research and we'll recommend a date, we'll come back with one, and then council can still modify it.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll support the, I'll support getting it on a future agenda.
Will you vote on that, Gail? Please?
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Wait, okay.
And, Mayor, can we direct staff to do some form of public notice regarding getting an ob, ob, ombudsman back on staff? Boy, that's a tough question for me, if we can.
I'll take that by, I think there's consensus, so I'll take it by consensus unless you feel the need to vote on it.
Yeah, very good idea.
All right, cool.
Go ADUs, and, you know, as you said, Bill, we do have a crisis. As much as we can encourage that, it'd be great.
There's a no lower impact way to get arena numbers up.
Okay, city manager report?
So I just have two quick items. If I can find my notes, I'll try to do them from memory. We have a, A, that, first, that the goal-setting session, we had started to schedule it for February 27, but that has been rescheduled, we're aiming for March 30.
I'm sorry.
So we'll, we'll post that agenda later this week, so anybody interested in that, the agenda should go up later this week. And then, the, secondly, we are also planning a general plan workshop. We're going to try the virtual workshop, I feel, for Regina and Watershed Progressive when they talk about all the challenges with scheduling these workshops during COVID, because we, we're going through the same thing, and we're going to try the virtual workshop on March 10. Last week, we only had 10, 10 people sign up the first week, so we put kind of a blast out today, and it looks like we got about 49 people to sign up now. So, so anybody watching or council, anybody that you want to pass that on to, we're going to try to do some things, like some little, like some group sessions and breakout sessions. So hopefully, people come prepared to talk about their vision for the future of Ojai. But that's going to be March 10 in the evening, I believe it's 6 o'clock, but I'll confirm that, maybe, I think it's 6 o'clock. So, so sign up now to get your Zoom invite, and that's all I have.
Thank you, James. All right, any future agenda items? Randy?
Depending on how well this planning session goes, I think that we need an educational Zoom meeting for the ATP. I'm still receiving a lot of questions about alternative plans and what's available. And I know anyone can say, go to the website and look it up yourself, but I think that there needs to be a, a public, another public meeting, it doesn't have to necessarily go through council, but if we can schedule something for Gray Grant and the engineering firm to actually go over this, this ATP project, and let's not just hang our hats on, on the And let's not just hang our hats on, on the 33, but actually start the discussion about what's going to be implemented in the downtown corridor to date. We're losing sight of that in this discussion, and it needs to be had. So I, I'd ask that we do that based on how well we can do a general plan Zoom meeting, and let's experiment with that. If we have success, then schedule it for sometime after that.
Bill?
Short council member report, Water Week continues, Mayor. Thursday, the OBGM will meet about and to discuss, take the next step towards doing public outreach on the groundwater sustainability plan for the groundwater basin. And then Friday, the state is, is going to present the Instream Flow Report from the Department of Fish and Wildlife and open up the public comment period, very important for the entire valley. And then the same day, the C- Casitas Municipal Water District is taking up their comprehensive water plan at their meeting. So the beat continues for water this week. Just want to make sure everybody is aware of, of those meetings.
Thank you, Bill, big water week. Susan, I would like to put something on the agenda. We'd like to have a City Hall Campus Committee to kind of help coordinate all the different groups. You know, we've got Help of Ojai, Stewart Canyon, Global Green, Compost, Garden, Pickleball, Children's Memorial, School System, and a potential marriage gazebo, so.
Oh, Mayor, I, I think we already have a committee.
A governing body of that? You know, James and I had talked about it, and, well, it's actually Matt's idea, thank you, Matt.
If I could clarify that statement, the council presently has three or four committees that exist by prior council direction to evaluate three or four different pieces of the City Hall campus. As I understand the request, it is to evaluate a comprehensive City Hall Campus Committee, which I do recommend may be useful for the council to have as a defined sub-council point of contact for day-to-day consultation as to the entire City Hall campus, mindful of the half dozen existing users plus the city plus more planned in the works or ideas percolating. It would make sense to unify that structure. Obviously, who is a council choice and whether to do so is a council choice, so I recommend having that, having that consideration as an agenda item, as I know it's been had in various pieces on the side, two by two by two.
Thanks, Matt, great idea, thank you for that. Anything else for the agenda, or?
So I, so we'll have that on a future agenda? Okay. Okay, I think that's, I think with all the things that are happening, I think that's an excellent idea. I just want to say, I've been, I've been really enjoyed being the liaison to the Arts Commission, they have so much going on. I, I don't even know all their new art installations, and they're very keen to bring back the tradition of monthly or bi-monthly, whenever it's needed to do a report. And I don't know if we can agree that they can do that now, or it doesn't have to be on the agenda, or, or what's needed.
Well, they could always come during public comment and give the report, like, they can do that now, right? Like, they can, they can come tonight and do the, the three-minute report. I, I think they were asking for three minutes, so that's always an option. We could agendize it, I would recommend it, if we're gonna, if we are going to consider agendizing it, I think we should reach out to each of the commissions and see if each of them wants to do it, because I haven't heard that request from anybody but the Arts Commission yet, so.
Well, the request is that they do it, the, the tradition was that they, they, they were the first public comment. And sometimes that doesn't matter, but, but if there's 40, you know, they don't want to be the 40th public comment.
Tonight, we had zero, right?
That's the request, that, that they go first, you know, after presentation or however the order is logically.
Okay, yeah, Mayor Sticks and I, we, we saw that this morning, we, and we talked, and we were thinking as part of the goal, like, we're, we're going to have that goal-setting session on March 13, I think, is the, the date. And we were saying that we have that session, and then her and I will then kind of talk about the agenda, and then we'll, we'll come back with some proposals to make some, maybe some modifications. So, so this could be one of those that we would consider, so.
I can concur, they wanted to do this for a while.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, so we'll report back on kind of where that goes.
And, and then I wanted to just air something else out. Prior to the meeting, I did hear two, at least one of the council members and possibly the second one has the same problem, because they were, they were not able, and, you know, I mean, is the 6:30 time going to work? I, I mean, I know that we can't just keep changing it back and forth, but I want to have it so that it really works for everyone. And also, I, I've always had the idea that it should be seasonal, as it gets hotter and days get longer, 7 o'clock, winter, you know, 6:30. I just want, I just wanted to make sure that this is going to work for everyone. And if they don't say anything, I guess I shouldn't be worrying about it. That's all.
Good for everybody? Okay, all right, well.
Good.
Thank you. Okay, so I guess we will adjourn this, and.
We're adjourning to close.